Welcome everyone and thank you for joining us at our city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, November 15th and it is 4:34 PM and we will call this meeting to order. And I would like to have the record reflect that we do show a quorum. We do have a quorum. And we will begin with our agenda item number two, which is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. We have today Pastor Troy Riggs that will lead us in our invocation. Thank you so much and welcome. And then we'll followed by the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Ron Burke. Thank you so much and welcome.
All right, thank you Mayor and Councilmembers. And on the way over here, I was thinking about Romans, chapter 13 talks about those of us that call ourselves Christians should be good citizens and support those in leadership. So, thank you so much for your leadership and know that we continually pray for you. Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, thank you for this time together. Thank you for letting us live in Alice, Texas, Lord, to live in this great state and this wonderful nation that you have blessed so mightily. I ask you to bless those in leadership here in our city. May they lead us with wisdom, may they lead us with patience, and may you bring peace to all those in Alice, Lord. We thank you for all of these things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please face the flag hand over heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we will move on to public comments. We do have a few citizens that do wish to address the council. We have Mr. Roy Rodriguez. Hi, Mr. Rodriguez, welcome and if you'll just again introduce yourself, give your address and then.
Okay, my name's Roy Rodriguez, Alice, Texas, 611 Commerce. I work for Florida's Property Holdings and I'm here to discuss my, I want y'all to vote in favor of our replats that we have, it's item agendas 6.7 and 6.9. The repla, South Heights Edition 6.7 is just a replat of a 150 by 150 area into 275 by 75s so that we may build two homes to help the middle how, middle income housing market here in Alice. And 6.9 is right across the street from us, right across the railroad tracks here today in front of Little Boat Net. And we are trying to replat that from four lots into one, right? So, the only reason we're doing that is because we have a goal to build something on that. It's going to hopefully be a car wash, right, for the citizens of Alice. So, I just wanted to express my approval and hope that you consider our replats, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have another citizen that wishes to speak before council and I hope I don't, you forgive me for if I mispronounce this, Ignio Garcia? I'm sorry, I hope.
That's fine. Ignio.
Ignio Garcia. Okay, I'm sorry.
Mayor Council, thank you all for having, I'm just giving an update on the Nateratorium. Last week, we got phone call from Gwen that they had changed out all the offices and they were ready for our natural gas system to get on. We did set a large meter and we set a meter there as on Monday, we went, after the inspection was done on Monday, we went and turned on all the appliances and stuff for, as of this morning, 10 o'clock, the water temperature is now at 75 degrees. That's been a long awaited project y'all have had and so have we. So, moving forward, everything seems to be working properly, so just an update on that.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, yes. Thank you. We have another citizen that wishes to address the city council. We have Mr. Ike Cornelas, previous mayor for the city of Alice. Welcome, Mr. Cornelas.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. My name is Israel Ike Cornelas. I live at 2009 Hillen Street in Alice, Texas. I cannot force anyone to hear the message that they are not ready to receive, but there is power in planting the seed. I'm here this afternoon to shed light on an agenda item that was presented to the council last meeting in October 22nd, agenda item 610. Discuss, consider, and act upon authorizing a city manager to engage the firm of Santos McBain Management and Planning for the purpose of applying for securing SRTS sidewalk and/or transportation alternatives. Set aside TSA, safe routes to in-school infrastructures. SRTS calls for a project. I have several questions on this agenda item. Why are we hiring a company that is owned by ex-city manager who is terminated from our city? And why did Councilman Sandra Bowen vote on this item? Why does she not excuse herself from this agenda item due to she sits on the board of directors for Santos McBain Management and Planning?
I do not.
And why was this item even on the agenda? And who placed the item on the agenda? You know, the mayor tries to put an item on the agenda and increase pays for employees by 3% with no support from the council, but we have no problem placing an item on the agenda and passing it for a company that is owned by an ex-city manager who spent millions of dollars during our greatest years as city. Agenda item 613 relates to hiring an engineering service for city grant application. And agenda item 614 relates to hiring a firm for grant writing and administration. Even though Santos McBain Management and Planning is not listed, I'm sure that's who we're planning on hiring. Now, Councilwoman Sandra Bowen states that the oath that she took holds dear to her heart, so it is true, so she should excuse herself from voting on these two items. Item 613, due that she's employed by an engineer firm, and item 614, due that she sits on the board of directors for Santos McBain Management and Planning. My final question is this, is the council consumed of our city? Still a consumer? Or have they been consumed by the good old boy system? If it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's definitely a skunk. I thank Mr. Ron Burke for not voting for that item. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Thank you. We do have another citizen that wishes to speak before council. We have Ms. Belinda Silva.
My name is Belinda Silva. I reside at 904 Lewis. I don't think you have to make accommodations, not that they've ever been addressed with my voice. You can tell my procedure, medical procedures are going quite well. In that regard, I want to clarify something Mr. Ornoli said. I think he meant to say that she serves on the same board on the workforce that he serves, not per Santos and McBain, just for clarification. I noticed she was nodding her head, so it's not the firm, it's a board. And there's also a school PR person that works there as well. As someone who has written, critiqued, and evaluated grants and its components, it doesn't make sense for us to hire a grant firm for the city of Alice. The city has a successful person who works with grants and wasn't one of the new city administration positions hired with the understanding that he would also help with the grants. If the plan proceeds in hiring Santos McBain, several issues and concerns must be addressed that aren't being transparent enough to the public in regards to the partner of this firm. Number one, the partner from the firm Ray de los Santos has been previously fired when he was city manager for Alice. Number two, he resigned from TAF after the chief of police quit and revealed why. Number three, as an interim city manager for Three Rivers, his own firm was used for the recruitment of hiring for that position. Number four, the councilwoman sits on the same board as the partner of the firm in another organization, not Santos and McBain. So, we would hope that she will not participate in the discussion or action as the firm she works for could also possibly be getting engineering bids on this as well. Number five, the councilwoman's school PR are on the same board as a firm partner, so it only makes sense for those two women to collaborate with the city grant writers who are already on city payroll to work on grant writing. Then the city and county could use the inclined services in regards to maintenance, equipment, tools. This would mean no expense to the city at all whatsoever. Number six, the council needs to keep in mind that the same firm partner he helped, that the city manager helped not to get fired with a vote of three to one, could be receiving this firm, does not look good in the perception of the public at all, and could possibly be viewed as a conflict of interest in our eyes. Number seven, we would like to have transparency from the council member who voted not to give this firm the job, and we thank him for bravely standing up and opposing it. We would appreciate him telling us and justifying why he voted no. As far as grants, I've been trying to write it for eight years. I am still trying to write one for the sports complex, Fine Performance Arts Center, and several other things which are already in the process. You all have credible people that are willing to volunteer your services, but you are denying us in helping you. We don't understand why. Have a blessed day.
Thank you, Ms. Silva. There's no other citizen comments, so we'll move on to our city council members. If you have any announcements, I'll start with you, Mr. Chris.
Yes, actually I do. You know, as council members, we sit up here doing the job we're elected to do. We do this for free and we are judged on every move and blamed for every misstep. I'm okay with that. That's what I signed up for. However, what I'm not okay with is when a member of council and citizens bring forward half-truth and outright lies. What I ask is that as citizens, we do not take what any of us have to say as fact until you look it up for yourself. I make this statement because when I leave here today, I will be called a liar. But again, this is public information and it can be requested straight from the source. Information such as the city manager and employee salaries and raises are right there for anyone to request, and you will find out it is not what they say, not even close. Next, the no evaluation lie, also false. But what is not false is the fact that the mayor avoided this conversation and evaluation as a whole. After she asked repeatedly for the review of the city manager, when it came time to do so, she recused herself and did not participate. She tried to get a legal removal, but with no actual reasoning to do so, she decided to just walk out of the room. She states that she wants to be the voice of the people, yet when it came time to speak about the city manager's performance, not only did she not speak up, but she chose to not even be in the room. It makes it easy to say I had nothing to do with that, when you don't even show up for a fight for what you believe in. I guess what is believed in is the need to misinform citizens about the city being at the edge of bankruptcy, when the truth is, we have a healthy general fund reserve and are working towards more infrastructure repairs in the past several years combined. Utilizing grant and general fund monies, this council and staff are working on much needed repairs, some of which are over 40 years in the making. However, our mayor and others would prefer that this goes to making things look pretty rather than making sure we have running water, working sewer lines, and our homes do not flood when we have heavy rains. They openly mislead the public that the negative balances are the result of this council's actions, when in all truth, one is a fund requiring the city to carry a future cost to close a landfill 20 years from now. The second is accumulation of decades of golf course operations. But the third is a debt acquired over a very short period of time when previous councils voted to operate a certain facility at a huge financial loss annually. As you may remember, our mayor was one of those that voted on this wasteful operation but did not end up as one of the ones that was recalled for this action. Those negative balances don't just disappear. It must be carried over until it is paid off. Let's keep in mind the same member of council was consistently corrected for wrongly interpreting lying items and miscalculating totals during the city's budget meetings. Totals that included the actual tax increase would entail or stated by her to be hundreds of dollars off, yet she likes to state that we council members have no understanding of a budget and passed it without regard to our citizens, in turn parroting that of a former mayor that sat in the same seat and actually had a negative budget that drained the city of $5 million in a single year. Well, I can tell you this, throughout the several budget meetings and hearings that we had, that same member of council brought forward two big adjustment concerns and did so during the final meeting. This is the meeting where we're to vote on the budget and the tax rate due to the fact that staff had made all the changes suggested and requested by the council in previous meetings. The first is the misuse of hot funds for the kiosks when a specialist was brought in for a specific reason to direct us in what these funds can and cannot be used for. Even after the subject matter expert stated this is a legitimate use of these funds, citizens are still being told that we are breaking the law. The second one is one of those, "Look what I tried to do for you, but they said no" moments when she asked for an extra 2% for employees right before the vote. Now, here's where basic understanding of a budget comes into play. The only two suggestions she made would have both reduced revenue and increased expenses. This in turn would have actually resulted in an increase in property taxes of roughly an extra five cents or 8%. Now, let's talk half-truth, restricting the mayor's position and requiring a sponsor to put anything on the agenda, when the truth is, every single one of the council members has to have a sponsor to put anything on the agenda, not just the mayor. She likes to say that we tell false stories of unity, when in turn she openly states no one works with her while neglecting to mention the fact that council members have spent hours in her council chamber speaking about requests and working towards solutions. She states that she gets nothing on the agenda, yet she has had council members sponsor her items on council agendas. Sadly, the problem is people sign up for a position, they have no idea of their actual role. The council members are the city's legislators and their primary roles are policy and procedure. This next part is straight from the city charter. The mayor shall preside over meetings of the council and shall be recognized as the head of the city government for all ceremonial purposes. In all truth, neither the council members nor the mayor shall have nor contain any regular administrative duties. We should all know our responsibilities, and as citizens, I say it is your responsibility to seek out this information for yourself. TPAs can be placed right here in City Hall and on our website. This is the information I want you to acquire for yourselves, while others just want you to listen to what they have to say without regard to whether it's true or not. Thank you.
Mr. Molina?
I'm good for now.
Mr. Burke?
Yes. On October 27th, 2022, Mayor Cynthia Carrasco presented a State of the City address and program representing the city of Alice. What was supposed to be and was originally represented by her and as the city as a recognition of city accomplishments and goals, unfortunately and disappointingly, was turned into a political speech in which Mayor Carrasco targeted all the city council in a negative way with some disparaging remarks directed at myself and other council members. This event was not her personal program. It was held under the city banner. It involves city time, city resources, and city employees. Its purpose was non-political and should have been respected as such by our mayor. But instead, the mayor subjected the audience, both in person and online, to statements that intended to cast the city council in a negative and critical way. This was neither the time or venue for such a hostile speech by her or anyone else. The mayor's actions and words were an embarrassment to the city and violated good judgment at a public community event. Her statements were in direct conflict with a stated mission to celebrate, not damage, our city image. This is unacceptable. However, despite this rhetoric and games that are being played, I know that this city council, my colleagues included and myself, will continue to rise above it and serve the best interests of the city to represent everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bell?
Yes, thank you. I always make time to reflect and find peace and say prayer, a prayer or two in my day. As I woke up this morning to some more drama in the news, I realized that every good thing you do, there's at least two or three bad things said about it by the handful of naysayers. We will never please everyone, but when one is doing good to the best of their ability in all they do, for all, not just for a few, that person is doing what is fair, just, and right. I personally will continue to stay positive and keep doing God's work because it's not about me, you, or them. It's about Him and His purpose for all of us as a whole. I ask that we keep our city in prayer, especially this time of year where we should be grateful and thankful for everything in life. There are so many wonderful people and positive good things our city has accomplished and has to offer, but if you think about it, why would anyone invest in our city when there's so much negativity and hate spewing from the mouths of people who should be lifting your community up, not tearing it down? Let us pray that the evildoers will be exposed for all they are doing to our city. I'm sure a certain someone or two will find something in my statement to bash me, to make me look bad, but this is a reflection on them, not me. All I have to say is God bless this city council, city administrators, and its employees, but most of all, I ask that God bless our Alice, our community, our citizens, our beautiful citizens. I thank you, and I will continue to do what my oath, you know, says for me to do, is honor and obey and do what I need to do for this community. I have the right to say these things because I know that God is watching all of us each and every single day of what we do, whether it's positive or negative. He sees all, He knows all. I'm up here trying to do what is good. I ran for election because I felt that I could do a better job than a certain person that was sitting here. And if you don't want me here, vote me out. Run against me. That's all I gotta say, is just do what you need to do. You know, I'll still continue to go out that door every day and do service above self, do what I need to do in this community. And I am so honored that two judges appointed me to be on the workforce services of the coastal bend. I represent the entire county. I represent the entire county in a positive impact. I look for, I'm on committees, the childcare service, workforce services, with policies and procedures. My work has nothing to do with that. My employment has nothing to do with that. I've always stepped out when I needed to step out. And you can TP A all of those too, because any agenda that we're not going to put an RFQ on, I'm here and I have a voice, a voice for our community, our citizens. So, all in all, just have a blessed day and remember, it's Thanksgiving. Be thankful. Be thankful because there's so much in life to be thankful, because you can walk out that door and the next minute you could be gone. Your loved ones could be gone. And was the hate worth it? Was the negativity worth it? No, because once you're gone, you're gone. I love Alice and I will continue to do my job no matter what title I have. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make my comment.
Sure.
Good evening. Thank you for attending. It was brought to my attention that the so-called State of the City platform, which was organized exclusively by our mayor, was not used as its intended purpose. As it turned out, it was staged for one purpose, to bash, berate, and vilify my fellow colleagues who collectively comprise your city council. I, along with many attendees, found the presentation not only unacceptable and appalling, extremely unprofessional, and to be quite frank, an absolute abuse of authority. I honestly find no consolation in bringing this to light, however, enough is enough. I will no longer sit idly while the negative forces continue to spread lies, disinformation, and hatred throughout my beloved community. I was born and raised here almost 50 years, and I'm doing my very best to provide the best services I can. FYI, we don't get paid. This is a free community obligation, and I take it very serious. And other than just being a businessman and knowing my town, you know, we know what we're getting into. People throw mud at us, they come up here, they just, you know, talk about all kinds of things, things that happened five, six years ago before my time. I can't affect any of that. To be honest, it's no wonder good people tend to avoid these public positions. I find that the love of community is one that's always been deep within me in my family-oriented life, and I can't just sit here idle and quiet while people just, you know, keep taking turns, you know, making, you know, making all these false statements, spreading hatred. The disinformation and lies, I mean, that, you know, to wake up this morning and see on the caller times, you know, and I'm going to read it right here. Residents seek to recall entire Alice City Council. If I saw that, if I picked it up and it said residents seek to recall entire Rockport City Council, what's the first thing that's going to come to my mind?
Don't go there. Don't go there.
Corruption, right? Somebody lying. The entire council? Are you kidding me? You know, I mean, it's sad that we have to waste our time. You know, Melissa's a very, very, very nice person. She called me, wanted to comment. I didn't have anything to say because I was kind of upset. You know, I'm a little bit indifferent. I think that it's an abuse. I think that there's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of bad information that's out there. And to be honest with you, like everything, I mean, you can't be more transparent than what you're seeing right here. I mean, we're on live, I mean, we're supposed to be, you know, kind of in front of everybody. I'm not a, I'm not a great public speaker, but I mean, I'm passionate about what I'm doing. This is my, you know, my third term. I love doing what I do. I mean, I'm proud of my community, but enough is enough. All we're trying to do is the best we can with what we have in front of us, and this is like, you know, councils past have put us here, and all my job is to try and do is so that councils that get here five, 10 years from now, they have a better platform than we have, and just trying to push them forward. And I'm sorry I have to bring up some negativity, but you know, we sit here and we just kind of take it every, every, every month, and you know, we don't have to do that anymore, and I'm not going to do that anymore. I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to be here a good long while. You want to come after me, come after me, but I don't plan on going anywhere. Thank you.
Well, thank you for those comments, and you know, I want to address our public that Alice is Buenajente. We are good people, and we are all here to serve our community. We were elected to represent the entire community and citizens, good, bad, ugly, whatever it is, but we're here to serve. And I challenge anyone to please access the State of the City. Go listen to it, and I presented the facts. There was a couple of things that maybe I could have not mentioned when I was, I paid out of my pocket for Christmas lights because I wanted to see our children that were coming out of COVID to have a beautiful white Christmas. I fought for a Christmas tree, for a community Christmas tree, and I was bashed for that. So, you know, I'll do this every day and every, anytime. Our community deserved that. I will, I will stand behind that, and I will always fight for our families, for our citizens. And again, I do ask everyone, go ahead and go listen to the State of the City. It's on YouTube. Listen to it. You be the judge. The facts are the facts. The tax, the taxes did go up. It wasn't very much. It was very little, but they still went up. I couldn't, I reported the way it was, unfortunately. And yes, I stated that our consolidated fund balances were negative. I couldn't lie on that either. So, anyhow, I just, that was the State of the City. It's a beautiful city, so don't let any of this negativity that's been said affect it, because we are a wonderful city. We have so many things going for us. We have our gems out there. We have our downtown that is up and coming. We have downtown merchants that are fighting so hard to make it successful. We have so many investors now that are looking at us and wanting to come to Alice. So, in spite of the comments you heard here, no, Alice is thriving. Alice is moving forward. Is it a challenge? Yes, but there are also expenditures that we need to tighten up on. And as far as me not going to an evaluation, there was a very good reason. I was accused. I was accused of something, and I felt uncomfortable to go and do, be in that evaluation with that accusation. So, if you- So if you wanna know what that is, you're welcome to come and talk to me, and I will be happy to sit with each and every one of you. My door has always been open. So anyhow, moving on, I just tell you, Alice, we're here. I'm here. I'm here to work for you. And I will continue to fight for what is right in spite of whatever anyone says. I challenge anyone, I don't put anything out there that is not true. And if you wanna reach out to me, my number's 361-396-3371. I am available, and I will answer your questions. Okay, so there is also something that was brought to my attention that our wonderful Community Action Health Centers has a program that they are having. They have 700 spots for free screening, Ms. Nelly. I'm so sorry.
Cervical cancer and breast cancer screenings.
For breast and cervical cancer services, or screenings.
They call K-Cost for more information.
So you can reach out and call K-Cost and for more information on that very good program. Thank you, Community Action, for what you do for our community. And thank you, Alice. Thank you to la gente de Alice. Alice sí es buena gente. Y aquí estamos para servirles. Gracias. Okay, we will move on to our agenda four, our city manager's reports. Oh, I have to open it up. I'm sorry. 4.1, infrastructure upgrades on South Cameron, Hobbs, and Aranza Street, downtown Main Street sidewalk repairs and striping. OPNS Hospital demolition update. 35,410 library grant from Ladd and Catherine Hatcher Library Foundation. Alice Police Department Coffee with a Cop. 100,000 local border security grant for Alice Police Department. 30,529 Justice Assistant Grant for Portable Radios for Alice Police Department. $7,170 grant for bulletproof vests for Alice Police Department. 470,244 Operation Lone Star Grant for Alice Police Department for enhanced overtime and equipment. Alice Fire Department Mental Health First Aid Course Action Plan, ALGEE, with Coastal Plains MHMR. Lake Days Event Report and Downtown Halloween Bash Report. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council wanted to give you all an update on some of the grants, some of the projects or events that have happened in here recently. I'm gonna have some of the directors speak specifically on some of theirs. But I'll start with the infrastructure upgrades on South Cameron and Hobbs and Aranza Street. So we've been having sewer problems for years on South Cameron. And I know we've had our vacuum truck be out there on the weekends pretty consistently. So we rerouted on Lewis and Hickey Street. We routed that sewer line to go to Hobbs, and we replaced that new sewer line on Hobbs and also replaced a water line on Hobbs. That was a long time coming, that project. But Joe Sines and his crew really worked hard getting that done.
I wanna commend them because they're on top of it. We have so many issues, and our residents call in, and, sorry. I just wanna thank them, since you mentioned them. They're awesome. Awesome team.
Also, on Aranza Street, there's a, we repaired that 20-inch main that we had on, that was leaking, and we actually caught it before it completely leaked. And so that was a big repair that we did on Aransas and around 10th Street, and also replaced some of the 2-inch water lines that have been lagging from replacement on Aranza Street. The downtown Main Street sidewalk repairs are complete. We went through and tagged them all. I think, you know, some of you guys may have noticed. We went through, marked them with the corners and the edges that needed to be repaired, and we did that. We also striped the parking areas downtown, also the crosswalks, and a lot of the parking lots as well and some of the other areas that we have city-owned property.
I also wanna thank the downtown merchants for having those meetings with us early on and bringing these to our attention and bringing them together with you and took action. Thank you, Mr. Esparta, and thank you to Ms. Arlene Metrano for having those meetings along with me with our downtown merchants. Thank you, downtown merchants.
The old PNS Hospital demolition finally got completed. It took a while to get that done, but, I mean, we were monitoring that closely. And, you know, it's, you can actually see the Episcopal Church that's there, Episcopal Church. It's been a long time. It's another project that old hospital has been an eyesore for years. I wanna thank the council and mayor for the support on the letter of support that you gave for Fish Pond to help with that TDHCA, Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, grant and the tax credits they got, because, you know, they need those letters of support. And you guys being behind that really helped, you know, push them up to the top. So that's done. That project is done. Now they're gonna start construction of the apartments they're gonna build there. So that's, you know, something that, you know, I never thought would happen. That hospital's been there for so long. It was an eyesore in vandalism, fire hazards, and health hazards, and finally, something happened there, so.
And I wanna thank also the developer for that, because when he came in to speak to us and keeping him encouraged, and thank you for believing in us and staying and sticking with us.
Yeah, that's David Fornie.
And thank you to Odie too, because of all her hard work and her constant on top of the policy and paperwork. So thank you so much. Thank you, Odie.
And we stay in pretty good contact. David Fornie is the developer there, and, you know, he'd been wanting to work in Alice for a while, and so we, you know, all keep a pretty close working relationship with him. Have Yolanda talked about the library grant and the Lake Days and the Downtown Halloween Bash? Give me an update on that.
Hello?
Hello?
So on October 7th, we were notified by mail that we had been awarded a $35,410 grant from the Ladd and Catherine Hatcher Library Foundation. They're out of Columbus, Texas. The maximum that they give out is $40,000. So what we did is we got, we had enough money to digitize 200 reels of microfilm, which is all the Alice Echo news. We will have our own digital newspaper archives online that can be accessed from anywhere on the phone. It's freely hosted on the vendor's website, and it's keyword searchable. You can type in your name, and everything in the news for the Echo, all those articles will come up.
That's great.
So we will be doing from 1899 to 2000. We have 91 reels left. We're gonna see how we can budget those in the next, you know, five to 10 years to use local monies to get those digitized as well. On October 27th, we have the Downtown Halloween Bash. We dressed as Disney characters to match the books that we were, the early reader books that we were handing out to the kids. We handed out 252 books, as well as 480 bags of candy. And the mayor and council also had about 1,000 bags that they gave out. On October 29th, we had our Lake Days event, the fall edition, at the lake. Also, with the Families Reading Together funds, we gave out 50 books, kind of one per family. We had 78 little breakfast bags with, had a muffin and an apple juice and some coupons from the Stripes. They handed us a bunch of coupons. So there was slurpees and hot dogs and breakfast tacos and coffees and soft drinks. We had crafts, and we had a photo area. We had 30 small wooden pumpkins that were painted. The parents that just wanted something real quick, they took the little ones. Then we had some bigger ones for painting, and then we had the little white pumpkins. And then we had, Fruit Revolution donated a pallet of pumpkins, which was about 45. I gutted about 10 of them before we started, and then when we ran out of those, the families started gutting their pumpkins. We have the police department and the fire department out there with us that day, as well as the Public Works Utilities, which was something a little different. We rarely get to see them out doing community stuff. And they set up a table, and they gave out some stuff, and they were also educating the kids. And so we hope to work with them in the future and get them out there.
I wanna thank you for all you've posted, because I've seen you're doing a theme and then some wonderful things. And thank you for the Lake Days too, because you made that grow, and it was a beautiful event, not only this one, but the one before. So thank you so much for all y'all do. Thank you.
Yolanda?
Chief Thomas. Thank you. I said, "Thank you."
Thank you. We all thank you. Doing a great job.
I wanted to hear me say it.
I don't know if we wanna thank you.
Just kidding.
So on a daily basis, our firefighters and EMTs come into contact with people pretty regularly. And one of the things that we've noticed, going, you know, going through our reports and talking with our staff, is mental health is a major issue in our city. Our police officers, firefighters, and medical staff do it daily. And so we, you know, sat back and tried to reach out to our local resources to try to figure out what we could do to help with that problem. And so we found our local MHMR had a program that we could partner with them, and it's called Mental Health First Aid. So I believe it's in your packets. There's a press release that went out and some information on Mental Health First Aid and what it kind of describes the program and what it's intended for. So I'm proud to announce that our department is 100%. Every single one of our firefighters is trained in Mental Health First Aid now. And so it's, we're one of the only departments in this area that has done this. MHMR was really excited. It's a statewide program that's offered all over the state to first responders, teachers, and it has a list of different types of people that this course is offered to. But we, you know, with our firefighters, they jumped at the chance to be able to do it. And it's gonna help us when we're contacting people out in the community. It's basically a very low end of how to deal with people with mental health issues, or somebody that's in a mental crisis or drug use type situation. So we're excited about the program. It's just, you know, we started it in October with the training. We just finished at the beginning of this month, training all of our staff. We're hoping that more responders will jump in and get trained. The more that are trained, the more that people can identify and help match people up with resources, the better our community is gonna be. So that's the Mental Health First Aid program.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And Lieutenant Enrique Sines is gonna talk about the police department, starting with a Coffee with a Cop that we'd had.
Mayor and Council, Chief Garcia sent me here on his behalf. He apologizes if he can make it. To start with, the Alice Police Department Coffee with a Cop was the idea of Sergeant Orlando Hassel with our department. He reached out to Starbucks in hopes to foster better community relationships, and they'd be able to host our coffee. So we did. We went, we handed out coffee mugs, coffee cups, beers, samples that Starbucks gave us to pass on to the drive-through and things. And we were able to contact a lot of community members, we got to hear their concerns, their safety issues and things like that. So we're incorporating problems, speeding complaints, things like that. We're handling those now, because we were able to foster that new community relationship with them. I think everybody had a good time doing it. We enjoyed meeting the public like that. Got to meet a lot of out-of-town people as well that traveled through there. And Starbucks was a great help. So, you know, I give it out to them for everything they donated to give out. The next deal we wanted to talk about was our 100,000 local border security police grant. That's what we call a Border Star Grant. To enhance patrols for the purpose to deter and to stop drugs, whether in our city or coming in from Mexico, wherever it shall be, any criminal activity. Able to conduct investigations, intelligence, surveillance, things like that. So the city doesn't have to fund that, the grant. You can apply grants, overtime hours for that. On the Justice Assistant Grant, the JAG Grant, that was a part two of a grant that I applied for last two years ago to buy 22 new portables. This was the second portion of it. The $30,000 is gonna allow us to buy 10 more portables and replace some very old ones we are using now. The $7,170 grant is a bulletproof grant. We apply for every year through JAG as well. This one's gonna assist us in purchasing 17 or replacing 17 bulletproof vests for the officers that are about to age out. So by January, by the time the order comes through, they'll be aged out, and we'll have new vests for them. And we use this grant every year to do the same thing. We just basically rotate new ones for once. The Operation Lone Star Grant, $470,000. We were able to apply for different things. We were able to get additional $250,000 in overtime for police officers, an additional $50,000 in overtime for administrative dispatchers or admin to assist if they participate in the Lone Star program.
Yes.
We were able to purchase 10 live-vision devices for our tactical team and our investigators at a price of $79,322. We purchased, we're gonna purchase a new license plate reader trailer. I don't know if y'all have seen the one that's on Texas right now. We're purchasing an additional one to put on the highway, and that's saving y'all also an additional $41,728. We also applied for, and we're granted what's called a solar-powered mobile surveillance trailer that we can take to festivals, parking lots during holidays, things like that, at a cost of about $29,000. And we'll be able to live-view it from wherever we're at, setting alarms to set it off if something happens. So we're real happy with that coming. Hopefully get it before the holidays. Able to use it in the parking lots or wherever we have a lot of traffic and things like that. And we were also able to purchase what's called a CPAC bundle, which is a portable x-ray machine to search vehicles or 18-wheelers, whatever, to see if there's any narcotics in inside. That was a total cost of about $57,000 that we also got, which brought up the total to $470,244 total for that grant.
That is awesome. Yes.
And we usually don't apply for that, on that grant, that much, but we did. We said, "Let's try to add more to it, justify it", and we did, and it came through.
We applied for a lot more, but.
Yeah, that's okay.
We'll take it.
There's some things.
And I wanna thank you, because you sat in in that meeting when we were discussing becoming part of that program and all that. So thank you.
And the Lone Star Grant is similar to the Border Star Grant for enhanced patrol, deter, and fight the drug problem we're having, and to add more boots to the ground and no cost to the taxpayers.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
By the way, I did attend that Coffee with a Cop. It was amazing. And I had a lot of people reach out to me that went through the drive-through, and they were so happy to see you guys. So thank you for that. Yes, it was a lot of fun.
I think right now we should give them a round of applause, because y'all do a lot, and you don't get thanked as much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is our Consent Agenda. All Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from Consent Agenda and voted on separately. 5.1, Discuss/Consider/Enact Upon Approval of City Council Minutes for the October 18, 2022 City Council Meeting. Council, no objections to the Consent Agenda? Okay, I will entertain a motion if there's no objections.
Motion to approve Consent Agenda?
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposing, sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda Item Number Six is Individual Consideration. I will open 1 through, I mean, 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, for, okay. 6.1, Discuss/Consider/Enact Upon Adopting a Resolution Authorizing and Approving the Execution of a Principal Forgiveness Agreement with the Texas Water Development Board in the amount of $2,046,000 and other matters related thereto. 6.2, Discuss/Consider/Enact Upon Adopting an Ordinance Authorizing the Issuance of Combination Tax and Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2022-A in the principal amount of $3,934,000. awarding the sale of such certificates of obligation to the Texas Water Development Board and ordaining other matters related thereto. Thank you. 6.3, Discuss/Consider/Enact Upon Adopting an Ordinance Authorizing the Issuance of Combination Tax and Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2022B in the principal amount of $1,020,000, awarding the sale of such certificate of obligation to the Texas Water Development Board and ordaining other matters related thereto. Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Matt Luhon with the Stradina House, and we serve as financial advisors in the city. And I'm here on behalf of Don Gonzalez, who is unable to attend. Before you, what I handed out is a presentation, as the mayor mentioned, that, that's going to cover these three agenda items. You've seen most of this before, so I'll, I'll go through it high level. If there are any questions along the way, please, please let me know. But I think for the most part, this is what you saw back September 20th, when you approved notice of intent for these certificates of obligation and the rest of the items. There is an update on the interest rate, and I'll get to that when we get to that page. If you don't mind flipping to Slide One, Financing Team and Ratings. Again, you saw this before. We did add to this slide the underlying rating. This is not a rated transaction, but the underlying rating of the existing bonds is, is an A. So, we wanted to point that out to the council.
Does IT have this too, so that the public can see this presentation? We don't have it?
I don't believe so.
Okay, okay. Sorry. Thank you. Go ahead, and I'm sorry.
If we move to Slide Two, this is also a new edition. This shows just the general debt that's outstanding. You can see there's about 2 points, or excuse me, 26.6 million outstanding. And of that, 17.9 is currently callable on those respective call dates. And if you look at the bottom of the graph, this depicts the principal and interest payments of those outstanding series. You can notice in about 2030, there is a decrease in about 870 to about $900,000. So, that shows some capacity there and so forth as it progresses, last maturity being in 2042. And this, this does not include the proposed series that we're, we're discussing tonight. This is your existing debt service.
These are the existing, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Move on to Slide Three. This is the AAA MMD Scale for the last 22 years. The green show, the green triangles show the current MMD, and then compares it to the average over the last 22 years. And as you can see in the front end, those first few maturities, maturity one through, say maturity nine or 10, you can see the bigger increase there between the average versus the current. And that's due to the volatility you guys, you're all aware of in the Fed increasing the federal funds rate on the front end. You can see it gets a little bit closer towards year 30. I show this just to show that there, there's, you know, overall, the average is not as, as bad as it has been. It's, it's not too far off from the average. But on top of that, the, the rate that the city has, that the Water Development Board has provided for the city for the 2022 As is subsidized about 30%. So, there, there is savings in that as well, and I'll, I'll get to that a little bit later. If we move on to Slide Four, here, I'd just like to highlight that bottom right box. Again, sort, sort of showing the same thing, MMD in that green shaded portion, and then the change over week, month, and year. And as you can see, the change over year in that far right column, pretty significant, about 286 basis points in year one. It tailors off, it slows down a little bit, but then it increases towards the latter part of the 235 basis points. So, quite a big change over the last year, week, and, and month. If we move to Slide Five, these were the same assumptions that we showed you back in September as you, it was read out in the agenda items. This is comprised of three parts. There's a $3.9 million of regular interest loan, which we're calling the Series 2022A. There's 100, or excuse me, 1.02 million, which is a 0% interest loan. We're calling Series 2022B. And then there's Principal Forgiveness, which is a grant, and that's $2,046. The, the city must draw upon the loans first, the Series 2022A and 22B, and then, then the grant thereafter. And you can see the structure of those two loans. Both of them are 30 years. The difference is, the Series 2022A is at a subsidized rate, which is 3.05%. And the Series 2022B is at 0%. Both of them are callable February 1st, 2033. If we move on to Slide Six, shows the sources and uses. The sources are the three items that we just mentioned for a total of $7 million towards the city. And of that, for the uses, about 6.7 is for engineering and construction. Water Development Board charges an origination fee, and that's $97,137. And then estimated cost of issuance for these three transactions is $215,000. Moving on to Slide Seven, we show an estimated tax rate impact analysis. We show the net TAV on column B. We did show the decrease going into this next year. We kept that flat as, as an assumption. And then if you look at columns F and G, those, excuse me, no, that's correct. F and G, those are the debt service payments for the 2022 As and the 2022 Bs. And as provided by the city, those are going to be self-supporting from the utility system revenues. And you can see that in H. And so, in column K, we show the projected calculated INS tax rate after the issuance of these two series. Any questions on this slide?
Counsel, any questions?
If we move on to Slide Eight, this is the pro forma for the utility system. Lot, lot of numbers here, and this was also shown to you last time as well. But what I'd like to show is, what, the only thing that changed on this slide was at the very bottom, the proposed debt service, the 2022 As, that includes the interest rate that was now locked in by the Water Development Board last week. It's good for 45 days, and that's that 3.05 that I mentioned. Before, we were showing conservatively 3.5. So, your debt service payments from the last time have decreased what we're, what we're showing today on this pro forma. But that last line is what I want to point to, the coverage. And if you look at the coverage starting in 2023, we're at 1.47, which is good. And the point of this slide is, from the perspective of beyond the city, but if you think of the Water Development Board and their expectations, and also the rating agencies, they, they want a coverage ratio that should aim for about 1.25 times. So, something to keep in mind as we continue down this path throughout the years when we look at the revenues. And, and these are the pledges, your INS tax rate and utility system revenues. We understand the city plans to use utility system revenues. We need to monitor those revenues to make sure that, that coverage is met from both those two perspectives. And lastly, I'd like to highlight the timetable. So, we're here tonight looking for approval for the sale of these obligations. And pending approval, we'll look to close December 14th. And then the last slide is just the disclaimer, but pending your questions, that, that concludes my presentation.
Counsel, any questions? Mrs. Bowen?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Burke? Mr. Molina?
Matt came prepared. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Well, as a help of your staff and the city manager, thank you for their, their time. This helped us, put, helped this, this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chris?
So, the acquired debt that we're looking at, when we're looking at, on the high side of payments, we're looking at under $250,000 per year. And if you break that down per meter, and I'm just doing math, just throwing things out there, you're talking about less than $30 per meter, less than $30 per meter per year in order to pay this thing off. So, when we talk these big numbers and we break it down to what it actually entails, you say we're paying this thing off with, you know, the utility fund. That's basically what it comes down to. It comes down to about $30 per meter per year, and, and we make our payment. So, I just wanted to put that out there. Not, not as much as, as a question, as a statement, to put that out there, so.
And you, you said we're going to, this, because I, I did read the documents and stuff, and it's going to be from our tax base, from our property taxes and the utility?
Yes, ma'am. So, the, the pledge is the INS tax rate and the utility system revenues. So, from that, you can pay from one or the other, or just one. And from our understanding, what we've been told by the city is that the, the, the plan to, to pay these, the debt service is going to be from the utility system. And that's what we depict on Slide Seven, on that column H, that, that, those are revenues from the utility system.
And are we still at the 95% on the projections, on collections, when we were projecting and doing the pro forma? Or did that change?
Are you talking about on, on the 95% on which one?
On the property tax collection and stuff?
Yeah.
It was still based on 95?
Yeah, yeah, but this is, I mean, it's coming from the utility fund, though, not from the.
It's a, it's not going to be property tax combination?
No, I mean, the, yeah, the projection is to pay it from the utility fund, and that's where all the, the.
Yes.
If I could speak real quick.
Sure.
Excuse me, uh, excuse me, Jay Wattis? I'm an attorney with McCall, Parker, St. Horton, and I have the privilege of serving as your All's Bond Counsel. I think the confusion that, that you might have in your mind is that the underlying security for these certificates of obligation is the ad lorm taxes and the revenues. But practically speaking, what you all have planned and budgeted for, and anticipate budgeting in the future, it's just going to be revenues. But the bondholder, TWDB in this case, the underlying security that they would have is not like a mortgage on the sewer system revenue, sewer system improvements that y'all are financing like a typical person would have a security interest in, you know, the, the thing being financed. Here, their security interest that they hold is the ad lorm tax security and the.
Gotcha. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Thank you.
Counsel, no other questions in reference to these?
Thank you for your continued efforts.
Thank you.
If there's no other discussion or any, any other questions, I'll entertain a motion. And we have to do these individually, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion on 6.1. Thank you, sir. I'm so sorry.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mayor, I make a motion adopting a resolution authorizing, authorizing and approving the execution of a principal forgiveness agreement with the Texas Water Development Board in the amount of $2,046,000 and other matters related thereto.
Second. Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Agenda Item 6.2, I'll entertain, I already opened this agenda item. I'll entertain a motion on this agenda item. If there's no discussion or any questions.
Mayor, I make a motion adopting an ordinance authorizing the issuance of combination tax and surplus revenue certificates of obligation Series 2022A in the principal amount of $3,934,000, awarding the sale of such certificate of obligation to the Texas Water Development Board and ordaining other matters related thereto.
Second. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item 6.3. I'll entertain a motion on this agenda item. If there's no other questions or discussion.
Mayor, I make a motion adopting an ordinance authorizing the issuance of combination tax and surplus revenue certificates of obligation Series 2022B in the principal amount of $1,020,000, awarding the sale of such certificate, certificates of obligation to the Texas Water Development Board and ordaining other matters related thereto.
Second. We have a first and a second. All in favor, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. I'm sorry. Say aye, I'm sorry. All opposed, same sign. I'm sorry about that. No wonder y'all didn't. Okay. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, and Counsel, at this time, we'll take a brief recess of maybe 10 minutes, just so that we can get our paperwork executed and, and have these gentlemen on their way. So, if y'all don't mind, okay? Okay. We'll be in recess. It is 5:37 for 10 minutes, and we'll be back. Thank you.
Uh, who's also in that business. And, uh, they're planning to, to do, um, um, a film in Freeher and part of it here in Alice, too. So I was able to talk about a little, just a quick overview about this, and that way, uh, JT can talk about his film as well.
Thank you so much, sir, and welcome to Alice. We look forward. We look forward to, to being in the film. No, just kidding.
Good evening, Council. Um, this is a little presentation on how to become a film-friendly Texas-certified community. Uh, the program is put on by the Texas Film Commission through the Office of the Governor. And so it's a pretty simple process. Uh, it's three steps. Attend, attend a film-friendly Texas workshop, which I did in October in McAllen. And then we have to pass some filming guidelines, which I have, and I think y'all have in your agenda packets. And Mr. Lemon has gone over those as well. And then we submit some photographs of potential filming locations that the city has. And we've come up with a few, uh, an auditorium, the airport, the golf course, some of our parks. And we'll submit those. And then after that, it's up to the Governor's Office to decide. Usually it's a pretty quick process, and as long as we follow all their guidelines, we should get approved pretty fast.
So I'll let you. I think it would, something that would make us, uh, uh, be seen a little bit more, put us on a map as far as the film industry as well. And it's kind of just the timing of, uh, Mr. Walker wanting to film here and us doing this as well. You know, kind of putting it together. And so I'll let him talk about his, uh, his film.
Hey, everyone, do I, I don't know if I need this, but first of all, I just want to say that I served on the neighborhood council in my, I've, I'm from this area. But I lived in Los Angeles for a long time, and I served on the neighborhood council, and I have a lot of respect for people who do this kind of service, because it's not easy. Really not easy. I am making a film that, uh, so we're shooting, uh, my grandparents owned a ranch north of, uh, Freeher for many years. And they, my, his, their children still do, my father's generation. And, uh, I wrote a script about four years ago. I'll get to the, I'll talk to this, I won't go on at much length. But we, um, we are shooting the film now in January. Our start date is the sixteenth. Um, we, I'm scouting, I'm down here scouting locations. I've been scouting for the last couple of months, but it's heating up, so I'm, I'm moving faster now. And, um, it's going well, and, uh, Mr. Esparza has been very helpful and wonderful. And I, that, I think that would bring me directly to this kind of, this entity, because there's no one to call. Um, and this, this central, south-central area of Texas, there's no, uh, film representative. There is no film-friendly community. When I called the, the Film Commission, they said, you know, I don't know. Like, I don't know who to call. There used to be this guy in Corpus, why don't you try him? And we tried, you know, it was just literally like that. And then we just started making, like, cold calling people. And luckily, we caught Mr. Esparza, and he was great. And we have called the judges in Duval and McMullen, and they've been very helpful. But it's all kind of ad hoc. There's no structure in place, and no one really knows how it works. And so they're just, you know, we're, we're, we're flying by night, which is fine. We'll, we'll figure it out. But I do think that there's, as far as I understand, this is free. There's no, there's no skin off the community's back to do this. And it would have been great to have someone to call and to speak who was aware of the local resources and who just, you know, could funnel us in whatever direction we needed to go. And so, um, I have not, frankly, because we're shooting the film in this area, have never dealt with a film-friendly Texas-certified community. Uh, I look forward to it. I'm sure it would be more straightforward, although everyone here's been very friendly. Um, so wouldn't, I, you know, couldn't have been friendlier, but it probably would be more straightforward and helpful. And I certainly think there's a fair amount of money being spent on film production in Texas and commercials and so on, and it can't hurt. It's my feeling. So any, if, I'm happy to answer any questions about, from my perspective as a filmmaker, but I think, yeah, that about wraps it up.
So one of the things, so when.
Thank you so much.
We visited, you know, he was, uh, JT was talking about locations and, you know, the police department using that as location or, you know, closing the streets. And so we haven't done this before, so I'm like, yeah, we can get all these accomplished. We'll work together with you. But we don't have a template, because it's never happened. And so the template would be easier where, oh, yeah, here's, you know, there's a form you fill out, uh, and tell us what you're gonna need, and we, we don't have any of that. So this is gonna help us accomplish that. But, you know, for us, and if we needed to, what I told them also, a small town, if we needed to get together, uh, council and mayor for a meeting, we just need three days' notice to get it done. We can make something happen if you need that. And so, you know, we're, we're accommodating here.
Yes.
And so this will just help us also, you know, do, do more so on that end. But, yeah, we welcome JT and his crew, and, and, uh, we're excited to, for them to, to shoot on some locations here in town. I know he was talking about the, the hospital and the police department and those kind of, kind of places, so.
We have a lot of interesting places here, and we have a lot of gems, so.
A lot of interesting people, too.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Yeah, you know, he grew up in, this was the, this was the big town. In fact, he was born in the hospital.
Oh.
He had his hospital.
My baby was born there. You know, this also is, um, when we had our meeting with the, the lady from the Governor's Office, it came in, and it just so happened to be that day. She mentioned this, and we said, yes, we would be interested in doing this. And that's when, um, you and I had discussed. And then Mr. Jose came along and took it over. Thank you so much. I'm looking forward to this. I'm, I'm excited.
Great job, Jose.
Yes. Thank you, and thank you to our Governor's Office, too, for bringing that to us, making us aware of it. I'm looking forward to the other project, too, so. We can't say, but.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
What's it about?
Yeah, which one?
No.
We got, not yet.
Not the other one. I thought you meant this one.
Well, I appreciate that, once, you know, something comes forward, that you follow through very accurately and thoroughly. And you bring it forward to us with enough information. So I appreciate your hard work always.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pereda.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. We're looking forward to.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to seeing that, the film and having that, um, premiere here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Definitely. Do I have a roll?
Okay, so moving on to agenda item. Oh, I'm sorry. Hello. I'm so sorry, Mr. Lemon.
It's okay, Mayor.
I got excited with being in a film. Okay, I'm sorry, Council, going. I will go ahead and entertain a, uh, motion on this agenda item, six point four.
I'll make a motion to act upon authorizing the city staff, staff to apply for the film-friendly Texas certification through the Office of the Governor, Texas Film Commission, and approve the proposed guidelines for filming in the city of Alice.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Looking forward to this. And anyone out there listening, if you wanna film something in Alice, Texas, we're here. Six point five. Discuss, consider, and act upon review committee's recommendations regarding RFQ twenty twenty-two zero zero five for city audit services and authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with the firm recommended.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
This evening, we would ask that you act upon the committee's recommendation and authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with the firm recommended. And that being said, we did put out an RFQ asking for audit services for fiscal year twenty-two. We did receive one submission. And just to let you know, the, the submission is the current auditor. And we, we have a good working relationship, the product produced, but I mean, we're more than happy with them. We, we just brought to you, uh, a while back, because we figured it had been six audits. So we thought it might be a good time to change and see if that was another set of eyes to get a different view. But a lot of the feedback that we received from numerous, i- it's just a timing issue, since they all work in the same entities. They all have the same due dates. They just were not taking on new clients, or they were leaving the business as a whole. They were retiring. We, we asked a lot of past auditors. We asked recommendations from other cities, and, and we're all going through the same thing. So i- i- I don't want it to reflect on our current auditors. They, they do, we are happy with your services, but we do recommend that you allow the city manager to negotiate a contract for one more fiscal year.
And who is this firm?
Park Fowler, I apologize. Park Fowler and Company.
Okay.
Park Fowler and Company?
Yes, sir.
Any questions, Council, Mr. Chris?
No, I know that we've been getting timely and, and, and well-performed audits. So I'm happy that we went out, and I don't have a problem with, with sticking with his name.
Mr. Burke?
No question.
Mrs. Bowen?
No, thank you.
Okay. If we don't have any other questions or discussion, I'll entertain a motion on this agenda item, Council.
Mayor, I make a motion, um, uh, to accept the committee's recommendation regarding the, uh, RFQ twenty twenty-two zero zero five for city audit services and authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with the firm Parker.
Fowler and Company.
Park Fowler and Company.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item six point six. Discuss, consider, and act upon a resolution authorizing tax resale on an offer to purchase tax sale property described as Lot Five, Block One, H.F. McGill's three subdivision, in addition to the city of Alice, Jimwells County, Texas, as described in volume two-two-five, page one-zero-one, deed records of Jimwells County, Texas.
Mayor, I'm gonna ask for this to be tabled. It's my understanding that, uh, Limebarger still isn't negotiating with, uh, some other people on this property, so there may be a bid off. And so, um, we're requesting that it be tabled.
Motion table. Second.
We have a first and a second to table agenda item six point six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion is tabled. Thank you. Moving on to six point seven. Discuss, consider, and act upon accepting and approving a final plot being Lot Seven R, Block Seven, South Heights Edition, as shown on map recorded in volume eleven, page thirty-one, map records of Jimwells County, Texas. Hello, Mr. Thomas. Thank you. Good evening.
Mayor and Council, you have before you a public hearing. Have, did you already open it up, or?
No, actually, it's, that's not. This is just a replat. This is six point seven.
Six point seven.
Okay. I'm sorry. Yep, I got it here. I had them in a different order.
Jumped ahead of us.
So we're looking at six point nine?
Six point seven. You want us, you want us to hurry up?
Seven R, okay, this is going from.
It's a final, final plot being of Lot Seven R, Block Seven, South Heights Edition.
Okay, so this, this property is, I got one second. Let me get to that one. I had them in a different order.
Shelley and Wright Street.
Shelley and Wright. So this property is the one that, uh, I believe there was somebody here to speak in, in favor of it during our public comment. Uh, this is a, uh, a, uh, property that was one large lot that they're subdividing into two, two lots. So they're replating it to make two lots. And they're both, they're gonna remain residential. Uh, the proposal is to, uh, uh, keep them zoned at residential, single-family homes. And the, the two lots are big enough to be able to, uh, it's big enough to be able to make two lots out of the one lots. Uh, went to planning and zoning, and was recommended for approval.
And that's big enough with, uh, scent backs and everything? Okay.
Big enough for three, actually, if I'm mistaken, right?
Uh, I believe so. The, there's a property next to it that is about the same dimensions, and there's three homes on that, on, there's, there's three different lots on that one, so it's a pretty big lot.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Burke?
No.
Mr. Molina?
I'm good.
No, ma'am.
What was that? How? It's just, just, the description's incorrect on the screen, but in our books, we have the correct lot and agenda item.
Says what that says, so.
Yeah, the posting is.
So you're kind of.
That's correct.
The posting was correct.
Yeah, you're, you're, and what you read was correct.
And what we have, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Your official agenda rule is not what they put up with.
Right, sure. So, uh, Council, if there's no further discussion or any questions in reference to this agenda item, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion adopting ordinance to rezone Arcadian Estates Lots One, Nine, and Ten from R-four multifamily district to R-one family district. Lots Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, and Eight.
I think that's the wrong one.
That's the wrong one.
You have to read it from, read it from the book, because they, they printed it wrong in our.
Six point seven.
Okay, uh, did, 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 six point seven?
Yes, sir.
And they just mixed them up in our, in our, in our book.
Yes.
So it's approving it, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to accept and approve a final plat being of Lot Seven R, Block Seven, South Heights Edition, as shown on a map recorded in volume eleven, page thirty-one, map records of Jimwells County, Texas.
Mr. Molina, if I may, we're approving it as presented, correct?
Correct. Second.
Okay. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, sorry.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, same sign. Okay. And motion carries. Thank you, Council. A little bit confusing, okay. So we'll go through that. Six point eight. Hold a public hearing to dis, to dis, to discuss, consider, and act upon adopting an ordinance to rezone Arcadian Estates Lot One, Nine, and Ten from R-four multifamily district to R-one family district. Lots Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, and Eight from R-four multifamily district to R-five town, townhouse district. Lot Seven from R-four multifamily district to B-three business district known as North Texas Boulevard, Alice Farm Lots, Part F slash B fifty-four and All Fifty-Five, Jimwells County, Texas. Okay? So this one is asking to hold a public hearing in reference to this agenda item. It is six eleven P.M. I will open up the, uh, public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to step forward and speak, uh, speak in reference to this agenda item is welcome to step forward.
And Mayor, if you'll allow me to, while we're waiting to see if anybody will step forward to speak in favor or against, I'd like to, uh, give a little synopsis on what this, uh, agenda item is. So on this pro, project, this is a, uh, an area that is a bunch of lots that they're gonna re, they're rezoning to be able to make some, uh, townhomes, some apart, uh, single-family homes, and then the very backside of it, you do have a copy of the map in your, in your, in your packets. But the very back end of it is gonna be, uh, zoned as a, uh, B-four for bus, business districts. There were twelve notices that were sent out to surrounding neighborhoods or to surrounding property owners. Zero responses. Uh, public, uh, planning and zoning held their public hearing, and there were no responses. No, nobody to speak in favor or against it. Uh, it was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. We still have the public hearing. Anyone wishing to step forward and speak in reference to this agenda item is welcome to step forward and speak on this item. Council, any questions in reference to this agenda item? It is, I'm gonna close the, seeing no one wishing to step forward at this time. It will close the public hearing at six thirteen P.M. The only question I do have on, in reference to this is, is this in an area where there's a floodplain or floodway, or?
Um, I, I don't know that, ma'am. But I know that, uh, if they're, if it were, they would have to make some, uh, adjustments to their property, uh, when they're, when they go to build.
When they start developing, or what is that? Mr. Esparza.
Well, when they come to get, I mean, um, and I don't think that this part where they're developing is not, not much of it. I know, um, uh, the, the, a little bit further south, there probably will be, uh, more of it in the floodplain. But when they come to get a permit, it's gonna, they're gonna have to, uh, I mean, we have a checkbook on there.
Still have to approve plans.
Yeah, that shows them where it is. And for their, for that matter, for them, um, if they're gonna do any financing or anything like that, they've gotta be able to show it's out of a floodplain also, so.
When everything's said and done, it's the developer's issue.
Yeah.
And, you know, and they, they're zoning it for what they, for what they feel they can build on.
Well, right now, we're just addressing the rezoning.
Correct.
Right.
We're just addressing the rezoning. Not, there, there haven't been any construction plans or anything submitted as far as, uh, there are some concepts, but nothing official's been submitted. And it, it will go before engineers to take a look at the property before it's approved.
Okay. Council, if there's no further discussion or any other questions on this agenda item, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a d, motion adopting a resolution, uh, adopting an ordinance to rezone Arcadian S, uh, Arcadian Estates Lots One, Nine, and Ten from R-four, uh, multifamily district to an R-one family district. Lots Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, and Eight from R-four multifamily district to an R-five townhome district. Lot Seven from R-four multifamily district to a B-three business district known as North Texas Boulevard, Alice Farm Lots, P.T.F.B., uh, fifty-four and All Fifty-Five, Jimwells County, Texas.
Second. Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. We will move on to six point nine. Discuss, consider, and act upon accepting and approving a final plat being a plat of Lot One, Lobo Express Station, all, as shown on map recorded in volume eleven, page thirty-one, maps, map records of Jimwells County, Texas.
Mayor and Council, this is the, uh, another one of the properties that was, uh, uh, there was, during our public comment section, uh, but one of the developers or spokesmen for the developers were here. Uh, this is a property that's multiple properties that they're, uh, ris, wishing to platoon to one, one large property to be able to, uh, I think they're proposing a, a car wash in that location, but, um, which currently is already zoned, uh, for that, uh, purpose, so.
Okay, Council, any questions? Mr. Chris?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Molina?
No.
Mr. Burke?
No, ma'am.
Mrs. Bowen?
No, thank you.
Okay. So if there's no further discussion or questions in reference to this agenda item, I will entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion to accept and approve a final plat being a plat of Lot One, Lobo Express Station, as shown on a map record in volume eleven, page thirty-one, map records of Jimwells County, Texas.
Second.
Who would like to second? Mr. Burke? Okay. We have a first and a second.
You're wrong.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Okay, and now. I got, now I lost myself. Agenda item six-ten, we have so many today. Discuss, consider, and act upon accepting and approving a final plat of subdivision of zero point six-two-three acre of land out of Lot Seven, Block Four, Adams Press Knoll Track, as, as shown on map recorded in volume one, page twelve, map records of Jimwells County, Texas, located in the Los Presnos Grant, Jimwells County, Texas.
Mayor and Council, this property is a property that is, currently has a building on it, but it's, it's, there's a proposal to demolish it and build a new, uh, business there. However, the property was not platted, and so we needed to go, go through the planning process with that property. So that's what this is. Never been plotted, and there's a new building proposed, proposed a new building going up.
And that's the one right next to McDonald's?
Correct, right next to McDonald's, right between McDonald's and that little private drive that's, uh, uh, next to the Whataburger that's there. So it's the, I believe it was a heart center at one time, and.
Right.
I don't know what else it's been, but, uh, the proposal is they're going to demolish that and build a new, uh, business there. So we're excited about that, hopefully.
Awesome.
Nice.
All change, please.
Nice. All change, yeah. Go with the kids.
Supposed to be no, uh, take five.
Take five, all change.
All change is what our understanding is.
Take five, right?
Yeah.
What did, what'd you say it was? Take five, all, all change.
If there's no further discussion or questions in reference to this agenda item, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion accepting and approving the final plat for subdivision, uh, zero point six-two-three acres of land out of Lot Seven, Block Four, Adams.
Presno.
Oh, I thought she was talking about, sorry. Yeah, Presno's track, um, Presno Track, sorry. As shown on map records, volume one, page twelve, map records, Jimwells County, Texas, located, located in the Los Presnos Grant, Jimwells County, Texas.
Second. Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to agenda item six point eleven. Discuss, consider, and act upon ratifying the publication slash distribution of RFP twenty-twenty-two dash zero zero eight and RFQ twenty-twenty-two dash zero zero nine for proposals and statements of qualifications from firms to, to apply to GLO for CDBG MIT slash mod, or hyphen mod, grant funds, and for grant administration and project implementation if grant funds are awarded. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Miss Reed?
The Texas General Land Office allocated to the Coastal Bend Council of Governments a hundred and seventy-nine million, five hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in mitigation funds, uh, and contracted with the COG to come up with a program, a process, a formula to distribute those funds among the eleven counties in this, in the COG region. The city participated in the public comment process, uh, that occurred in the late spring, early summer. And, um, as the COG received those comments and received comments from other jurisdictions, they applied their formula and tentatively allocated to the city four million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred dollars. Uh, later, the COG submitted its recommendations for allocations to the GLO. And the GLO approved the COG's allocation October nineteenth of this year. So the city's allocation of four million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred dollars was approved. And, uh, half of that amount, a little, a little over half of that amount, has to use for a project that benefits low-to-moderate income persons, which is part of the HUD requirement when you're, you have CDBG funding. Um, October twentieth, the GLO sent the city an email, uh, saying that we've been approved in the COG mod, and that, uh, we have to apply for those funds, and that the grant application is due February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Short timeline. We therefore, after receiving that email, uh, finished developing the RFP twenty-twenty-two dash zero zero eight to, uh, receive proposals from grant writing and grant administration firms, and, uh, finished RFQ twenty-twenty-two dash zero zero nine to secure engineering, uh, proposals, statements of qualifications from engineering firms to help out with the grant application process, and then to help out, uh, when, uh, funds are awarded. We published the RFP and the RFQ October thirtieth and November sixth, and also distributed, uh, the RFP and RFQ via email to various firms. The deadline for receiving submittals today at ten A.M. So we're asking you to ratify the issuance of the RFP and the RFQ.
Okay. Council, any questions? Mr. Chris?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Molina?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Burke? Mrs. Bowen?
No, thank you.
I wanna thank you for this, and I know this was part of also some of the workshops that are produced.
I want to thank you for this, and I know this was part of also some of the workshops that are participating in, so I was very pleased, along with others, all within our community and our, our county. So I was excited to see that the City of Alice was considered for, it was awesome.
It is an exciting.
Yes, so.
Opportunity.
And thank you for working hard on this. I know that you had to work really fast and demetrio, and so thank y'all.
If there's no other questions or discussion in reference to this agenda item, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion ratifying the publication and distribution of R F P twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight and R F Q twenty twenty-two dash zero zero nine for proposals and statements of qualification for firms to apply for G L O for the C D B G dash M I T dash M O D grant funds, and, and for grant administration and project implementation if grant funds are awarded.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. A motion passes. Thank you. And then we'll move on to six point twelve. Discuss, consider, and act upon appointing at least one member of city council to be on the review committee for proposals received in response to R F P twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight, and appointing at least one member of city council to be on the review committee for statements of qualifications, S O Qs, received in response to R F Q twenty twenty-two dash zero zero nine.
Mayor and counsel, since we're under such a short timeline to get the application developed and submitted to G L O, we reached out to Councilman Burke to ask him if, if he would meet with us today. And depending on how many submittals we got, we were going to try to review and evaluate all the submittals and bring you recommendations tonight. So we reached out to Councilman Burke. He met with city staff this morning, and again, the deadline was, for submittals, was ten a.m. So we do have a council member who's on the review committee.
Already. So officially.
Officially.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Yes, thank you.
You can either table this or just pass it.
Is that the proper?
Should we?
I should just, we.
I would go ahead and appoint him. Since it's on the agenda, since we've created the presumption that he can't officially sit there unless you all appoint him, let's go ahead and get him appointed.
There you go.
Well, and, and what it is, is typically, it asks for a member, so it, the, the process we use is, is having, so, you know, you guys decide who, you know, somebody wants to volunteer, and so since this one was quickly, that we needed to, to get it done today and, and review those, you know, they just, Barbara and Gabriel.
We weren't. It's fine.
And so it doesn't need the.
To put it, to put it very simply, it's, as you always say, Mayor, best practices is for council to decide. However, there wasn't any specific requirement that you all vote on the appointment, but it's best that you all go ahead and vote on the appointment.
Mayor, I make a motion appointing Councilman Burke to the review committee for proposals received in response to R, R F P twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight, and appointing Mr. Burke as well to the review committee for statements of qualifications received in response to R F Q twenty twenty-two dash zero zero nine.
Second. Okay. We have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Burke, again.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mrs. Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Six point one three, agenda item six point one three. Discuss, consider, and act upon review committee's recommendation for hiring, for hiring a firm for engineering services for the city grants application and project implementation of one or more contracts if awarded from the G L O's C D B G, M I T, hyphen M O D programs, program or programs, and be authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract with the firm.
Mayor and counsel, again, the deadline was ten o'clock this morning. One engineering firm submitted statement of qualifications within that deadline, and that's Ardua Group. We did review their S O Q or statement of qualifications, and we're recommending that you authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with Ardua Group. And name the firm in your motion.
Yes, sir.
What's, what is it again? Ar, Ardua?
Ardua.
Adura?
Adura.
Yes. Sir Lemon?
Go, go ahead, go ahead.
Formerly L N V, Robert Vietta, Hector Castaneda, and we had previous work experience with them on other projects.
Yes, they're good engineers.
And, and Mayor, just for the record, because some accusations were made earlier, I'd like to clarify for the record with Barbara that there was no submission made by L J A Engineering?
Correct, no.
All right.
Thank you. It was just Ardua Group.
I think you mentioned that, right? There was only one?
There was only one that submitted on time. The second one that came in was from San Antonio, and it came in this afternoon, past the deadline.
Deadline, okay.
But no submission by L, L J A.
Or any other firm.
Or any other.
Thank you.
Well, there was another submission, Mayor, it was late.
It was late.
Well, the late.
The one out of San Antonio was late. The Parra, Parra, P A R R A, Parra Group.
Okay, thank you.
What was the name of that company again?
How you spell it? That's what I need to know.
Ardua?
It's not written anywhere here.
Yeah, no, it's.
Oh, well, we just.
Yeah, they got it today.
I don't make the. Sorry, was it R what? How you spell it?
A R, A R D U R R A, Ardua Group.
Adura.
Formerly L N V. Former, right.
Okay, thank you.
So we have it. Thank you, ma'am.
Uh-huh, thank you.
If there's no further discussion or questions in reference to this agenda item, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the committee's recommendation for hiring the firm, Ardua Group? Get that straight. For engineering services for the city grant application and project implementation of one or more contracts if awarded from the G L O C D B G dash M I T dash M O D programs, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract with said firm.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we have next agenda item six point one four. Discuss, consider, and act upon review committee's recommendation on hiring a firm for grant writing, grant administration, and/or planning services regarding funding available through the General Land Office, G L O, C D B G, M I T, dash method of distribution, M O D program, programs, and be authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the firm.
Mayor and counsel, again, the deadline for proposals to be submitted in response to this R F P was ten o'clock this morning. We received four submittals. Trailer and Associates, Mobility Resources, out of, out of Alamo, Grant Works, and C S R S out of Victoria. The review committee reviewed the four proposals, and at this time, and it was close between Trailer and Associates and Grant Works, but based upon cost, we're recommending awarding the contract to Grant Works.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, and again, there was an allegation in regards to a certain firm, Santos McBane. Did they submit a proposal?
No, sir. Only, only Trailer and Associates, Mobility Resources, Grant Works, and C S R S submitted.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, in your motion, if you'll name the firm.
The firm, okay. Okay, counsel, if there's no questions, discussion in reference to this agenda item, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion accepting the committee's recommendation for hiring Grant Works for grant writing, grant administration, and/or planning services regarding funding available through General Land Office, G L O, C D B G dash M I T dash method of distribution programs, and authorizing the city manager to enter into contract with said firm.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all opposed, same sign. A motion passes. Six point one five. Discuss, consider, and act upon review committee's recommendation for hiring a firm to implement the project described in R F Q twenty twenty-two dash zero zero four for airport hangar project, and be authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract with the firm. Thank you.
Mayor and counsel, as we adopted the updated airport layout plan with narrative, in that updated plan is listed hangars, and based upon the funding available to the city right now in grant funds, and we've discussed this with the Office of Aviation, we decided to do procurement locally instead of going through the Office of Aviation because of the timeline to expend the grant funds, and also because of, of cost. But we still have to report to Office of Aviation the steps we've gone through so we can get reimbursed from the twenty nineteen non-primary entitlement funds and the twenty twenty non-primary entitlement funds, together, which total three hundred thousand dollars, with a local match of thirty-three thousand divided evenly between the city and the county. So this is our local procurement packet.
And, and just let me clarify, when she says local procurement, what, what it, what it is, is that Texas, to, to, these funds need to be expended by May, at March of twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three. And so when, we've had several meetings with Texas, even as, when they came down here, flew in, their directors came down and visited with us at our airport, is that they wouldn't be able to, to meet the procurement deadlines if they handle all the procurement. When she says local, it just means that we're doing the procurement in-house. They, and it's got to be approved, it's their approved process, but we've got to do all the, the grunt work, and, and most of the time, they do it. And so a lot of these N P E funds, like the last one, like the airport hangar or the runway work, they pretty much take care of it. It comes before the council, and you guys approve it, and, but we don't have any, and we don't do any of the work. And here, they, they put it on us because the timeframe is pretty tight, and we don't want to lose those monies because we need to spend them. So the local procurement means that we're doing all the legwork to federal, let's say, guidelines. They still have to approve it, but that's what we're doing, and that's how we, you know, work this project, yeah.
And as Mr. Sparsa said, using state and federal guidelines, we shared those guidelines with ICE Engineering, who developed the R F Q for design build of the, the hangar project. And the R F Q was published September fourteenth of this year and September twenty-first of this year, and statements of qualification were due by ten a.m. October twenty-fifth. We received two submittals, one from Rockin' H Ranch Services Design Build, and the other from Don Jackson Construction, Inc., with K S A engineers. ICE Engineering was on the review committee as well as two staff. The recommendation of the review committee is to authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with Don Jackson Construction, Inc., with K S A engineers. And again, your motion, please name the firm.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Chris?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Molina?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Burke?
No, ma'am.
Mrs. Bowen?
No, thank you.
And I might add that Daniel Perez from ICE Engineering is here, if you had any questions.
Aye.
Sure.
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 Thank you for being here.
Welcome.
Hi, counsel. My name's Daniel Perez. I'm from International Consulting Engineers, or ICE for short.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
We recommended to Barbara to choose Don Jackson Construction.
Thank you so much.
And one of the things, and from what I understand from Barbara, and I haven't been able to speak with Daniel yet, but the K S A engineers, and what we're, this is a quantum hangar that we've talked about.
Yes.
Uh, that is pretty much like that Half Moon with fabric, and, and, you know, that's something that can be done quickly. And it's my understanding that, that K S A and Don Jackson, they, they've done a lot of these hangars out there, and so kind of specialize in that. So I think that's what, you know, something that put them over, way over the edge for, for the award.
What was the life, I know you had, you mentioned the lifespan or the life of the, of those hangars?
Uh, well, the fabric, I think they, they have like, Daniel, if you remember, is it twenty-five to thirty years on the fabric? The life expectancy of the fabric?
I think that's what she was asking.
I think that's what it was, when I.
Twenty, twenty, twenty-five.
Yes, sir, twenty-five to thirty.
I remember.
They're military.
Yeah, I remember hearing that. Oh, good.
And that's where, you know, they, the idea is, and it's pretty new that F A is allowing those to be built and paid for, but they're tried and tested. The military does it all across the world, and so, you know, I think it was kind of natural to say, yeah, you know, there's hangar spaces needed throughout Texas. I was talking to the airport manager of, of Rockport just last week about hangar space. And, you know, there's just, there's a need for hangars, and especially in our area, you know, they have a waiting list. We have some sort of waiting list. We have people that have called in, but we don't have fully space available. And so this will allow four planes to be housed inexpensively in that location. So luckily, you know, F A approves these, and we can get them built quickly.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions?
No, thank you.
No, thank you, Dan.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for being here and, and your effort. Thank you.
Counsel, if there's no further discussion or questions in reference to this agenda item, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve committee's recommendation for hiring Don Jackson Construction, Inc. with K S A Engineering to implement the project described in R F Q twenty twenty-two dash zero zero four for the airport hangar project, and authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract with such firm, said firm. Is that okay?
Okay. We have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, same sign. If, motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for everything, Barbara.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your hard work.
Ms. Barbara.
Same here. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda items six point one six. Presentation and discussion from Alice Police Chief Eden Garcia regarding statistics, operations, training, practice, equipment, and crime arrest prosecution, prosecution data, staffing, and general operations, intergovernmental cooperation, equipment usage, procurement of Alice Police Department. Thank you, and I know you're not Mr. Eden Garcia.
No, I'm, pardon me, I'm here in his place for today.
Welcome.
Basically, what I do have is just stats for the quarter from August to, to October. So total deaths were a hundred and one that were reported, total burglaries were fifty-five. Total citations given were three hundred and seventy-six, for a total of seven hundred and forty-seven violations. Eight hundred and ninety-three warnings were given, for a total of one thousand sixty violations on those warnings. Total stops, that all Alice Police Department did was one thousand two hundred, sixty-nine stops. Total violations for that was one thousand eight hundred and seven. Our total call for service is three thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight calls for service. Out of all those calls for service, we have two thousand five hundred and fifty-six actual reports that were done for those. Total arrests were. Total arrests were 326 arrests for the quarter, and the total accidents investigated for the department, City of Alice, was 99 total accidents. As far as the other agenda items on this, as far as training practices, I'm still assigned to training, and right now, we're currently hosting an alert training for Level One Active Shooter course, and that is being held at La Viana Plaza. We are actually hosting that one. We have two day, two classes, we just finished the first two days, the next two days are Wednesday and Thursday. So as far as equipment, staffing, we're still hiring, and we're still looking for applicants for some of our police positions to be available.
If I can interject something, in the intergovernmental cooperation, is they've almost finalized the deal with the school district.
Yes.
In regards to the resource officers over there, is that we've prepared a draft of an agreement based upon terms city manager, police chief have worked out. Brandon and the chief came and visited with me about it, we got it done, and I think it's been submitted to the superintendent for his review.
Yes, that is true. Any other questions on our, on our stats, anything?
Counsel, Mr. Chris?
No, thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Molina? Mr. Burke? Mrs. Bowen?
Is that training in collaboration with the, with the Sheriff Department?
Actually, we hosted the class, and I offered slots for them to actually be in the classes.
Wonderful. Okay, great.
And actually, it's Alice Police Department, Gilmore County, and some of Texas Department of Public Safety troops are in the class.
I love that you all work so well together.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And we do, we like that.
Yes, sir.
It's a good collaboration between all of us in this area.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Gil.
Mike, I would ask if we can get the chief to give us the quarters before, so we can have something to reference, email it out to us if you would please. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's a good idea.
Six point one seven, presentation and discussion from the Alice Fire Chief Patrick Thomas regarding statistics for third quarter calls for service. Welcome, Mr. Thomas again. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel. I have before you the third quarter statistic for 2022. It's in your packet. Basically, I'm not going to go over every single number. I have the numbers there for your review. If you have any questions, you can always contact me outside of here if you need to. But I, just generally speaking, we did have an increase, I'm sorry, we had a decrease in the amount of calls that we had. However, there was an increase on the fire-related calls. So while there was a decrease, there was still an increase that we don't want to, we don't want to see a lot of fire calls. And then we also saw an increase in the amount of help that we're giving other cities. So there was, you know, significantly, almost doubled, how much we're going out to do mutual labor with other departments. But sometimes that number is higher than we like to see, but at the, on the flip side of that, we request them to come help us, and sometimes that number goes up as well. So aside from that, we, you know, we did that on the very front of your statistics, where your packet, there's the cover sheet that kind of describes what I'm, what I'm discussing right now. In addition to that, we, the other types of service requests that we've had have been for training, standard response protocol, active shooter training. We've done, trained over 1,000 stop-to-bleed students. We began our firefighter Fridays at the schools, and of course, you guys heard earlier about the mental health first aid. And that's my report for the third quarter. If you have any questions, you can contact me. I know you haven't seen the numbers because you just got the numbers today, so which is why I allow you to. My type of, any questions?
Mr. Chris?
Well, the one thing I can say is I love to see the, these numbers, you know, that, that, yes, things are going down and some are going up, but the one that we love to see going down at all times is the average for all calls dropped by almost a minute.
Yep.
Getting on site. And, and in 15 seconds in regards to average timeout.
Turnout time.
Just turnout time. That is, 15 seconds doesn't sound like a lot of time, but when you're going from a minute and a half to a minute and 15 seconds, you guys are, you guys are screaming.
When you're, when you're the one waiting for that ambulance or that fire truck to show up.
Yes, exactly. Fifteen seconds is a long time.
Forever.
So, you know, and I can only see these numbers getting better and better with the, with potential move of the fire station and us being able to better serve, you know, the north side. Keep it up. What you, what you guys are doing there is amazing in regards to the mental health, just the turnout time, and educating the children. Again, you came out and you talked to us at Rotary about some great, some great things. Can't say enough about what you guys do at the fire department and the police department. Keep it up. Love to see these numbers.
They got to see me with, with my red nose on.
Yes.
Didn't get the full makeup, but got the red nose. Yeah, October, this quarter is a pretty busy quarter for us, not just the response times, but, or responses, but.
Prepare.
It's fire prevention month, and fair month, and all that kind of stuff.
You ready for turkey frying disasters?
Oh, yeah. See, we can have it, the first time we have zero calls.
Yes, definitely, yes.
Maybe also do a safety video that we could put out.
Sounds like a great idea.
Proper way to fry a turkey. I think that'd be a good thing to do.
Great idea.
Let the clowns do the frying.
Yeah.
Yeah, let the clowns do it.
But let's not catch anything on fire for real.
It's okay, they have, what is it, squirt? They have squirt.
Thank you, appreciate you, sir.
Mr. Burke? Mrs. Bowen?
Thank you for all you do and your staff. God bless y'all.
Patrick, I do have one, one question, knowing that the winter months are here upon us. We always think about the safety with the relighting of heaters and wall units and those different types of things. Is there anything we're offering our citizens or the public?
So we'll, we'll be putting out some press releases. We do it annually. We put press releases out when it comes to the turkey frying, we put press releases out with a colder. Now that these cold fronts are starting to blow in, and we get, the temperatures are starting to drop, we, you know, there's safe ways to heat your home. So we've got some press releases that we'll put out there. We also have some press releases on the carbon monoxide poisoning, that's another concern that we have every year. So we'll be doing that. And of course, the, you know, just generally, depending on how cold it gets, we try to time those with the weather, because, you know, South Texas weather, the weather can go up, you know, it can be 90 degrees one day and, you know, windy the next. And so, you know, we gotta time those, those press releases, because it can come out and the next day it's hot and there's a press release about it. You guys are crazy. But yeah, we try to keep.
Tempamental weather.
Plan those out accordingly.
Thank you so much.
Understood.
Thank you for all y'all doing.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we will move on to agenda item six point one eight here, status report on October 22, month in, financial statements, summaries of funds, and delivery of October 2022 check registry.
Hello again.
Hello. This is Clicker.
Thank you. Thank you. All righty, Mayor, counsel, we're here. For the financials for the first month, ending October 31st, 2022, our general fund revenues are 298,262. We had a property tax budget of 246,250, and at this point, we show no revenue for that. Exhibit B, we have our MNO and INS 2023 of 15,308, and last year, we were showing 5,236,000. So we're roughly 10,000 above that mark. Going back to exhibit A, it's just to, we, we did do our new budget for sales tax, so that's going to be at 8,000. And just last year, as you know, we're two months in rear, so we don't show any revenue at this time for that. Exhibit C, sales tax budget versus actual, and this includes the month of September, and this is for fiscal year 2022. September's collection was 571,000, so 65,000 above target. 2022 budget was 6,067,248, and we have an actual of 6,533,820. So we had a, we were over budget 466,572 for fiscal year 2022. Exhibit D, we have actual 2022 versus actual 2021, and we had an increase of 949,048 over previous year-to-date. Going to exhibit E, we have our general fund expenditures. In year-to-date, we have expended 1,037,135, and it's the first month of the year. So just some of the departments that we want to touch on is general services sitting at 22.64%, and that's because we did the one-time payment for TML insurance of 161,000. Our command center is showing 199%, and the reason for that is we spent just over 49,000 for some siren repairs, but that, we do plan on getting reimbursed for that whole amount from the county on that. And finance department is sitting just over 8%, and that's because it's a once-a-year annual payment for our software of 51,000. Exhibit F.
Gabriel, we can go back to the slide, just kind of let y'all know how that, how this works, because, you know, we're, we have to run off modified accrual, which you talked about before. So that, this general service line item, you know, we're, our budget year-to-date, we should be, we should have spent 66,421, but we spent 180,443. Now, we were running off straight accrual, we would be doing general entries every month because, you know, we had a TML expense of 161,000 that applied to the general, general service fund. That accrual divided by 12, that would have been a $13,000 expense. So we were running off what a standard business runs off, which is full accrual, our number, we would be showing about $32,000 of an expense, so we wouldn't be over budget. But since we're a government entity, we run off modified accrual, which sometimes mimics cash. And so the cash was expended all at once, we have to put it on that month that is expended all at once. We're a regular company, we would assign that line item for that month, and every month, we would, we would accrue it and put every month that 13,000. So this is what happens at the beginning of the year, and especially on the general fund, you know, that pays out these kind of expenses.
Exhibit F, revenues versus expenditures for all funds. The general fund shows a negative 738,872. The solid waste is showing 38,767. Utility fund is showing 255,494.
And again, that doesn't show.
That's not including the sales tax, not including property tax, because those come in after the tax. So yes, and then also because of, like the city manager just mentioned, we're taking those in the front end, so it is a little skewed. Exhibit G, that's the final slide, revenue over expenditures comparing 2022 versus 2023. And the general fund last year was sitting at negative 773,123, and this year, we're sitting at negative 738,872. Solid waste last year was 14,900, and we're now at 38,767. Utility fund was at 105,643, and now we're at 255,494. So just along these same lines, like the city manager just mentioned, I wanted to touch on, is the way we closed out when I came up here last month, we were showing a negative 1.2 million for the general fund. But we talked about how that was not including the last two months of sales tax. Now you've seen when we've reported, we have those numbers in there. So when we were sitting at a 1.2 deficit, we actually have just under 1.2 in sales tax collected for the fiscal year, and then we still have this $600,000 of TIFs, so that almost wipes out that deficit of general fund and solid waste. Of course, the general fund, I mean, it's up to you how you want to do those transfers and so forth, but the way we look at it is that's what's the general funds for. If we ever have a department that falls below budget, and it's, we have an excess in another fund, especially a general fund, that's what it is. So I just wanted to close that out, that it's there. I know these numbers starting out looked negative, but in all reality, once the sales tax comes in for the actual month, it won't do so.
So it's always catching up. We're always two months behind on sales tax, because that's, we can't allocate the sales tax in, you know, it, because we don't have, it's not, it hadn't, the money hasn't come in, it's not what's considered measurable. We have an allocation that we know that we could put in there, but we can't put it in because we're modified accrual. And so that's why it's always lagging two months. But when we're done with the end of the year, we can go back and reconcile, which is what the audit does.
Right, that's what.
You go back, and they say, okay, yeah, we show a deficit of 1.2, and it wasn't 1.2, because we got TIFs money in, we got two months of sales tax, 500,000, 500,000, and then 600,000. But the nature of our, our accounting, which municipals have to use, causes these kind of issues to, to be skewed, to look, understandably, you know, you want to have the cash and show it before you can spend it, and that makes sense. But on the financial side, financial statements, it does show up kind of odd.
Yeah, and it always has been.
Right.
And it always will be, two months in the rears. I mean, luckily, you can actually go out as of like the 21st of the, of the month and find out what.
Right.
You will eventually get.
Exactly.
But until it's in, in a governmental's bank account, you don't account for it.
Right.
Right.
So, and then, and then we've also seen where they like to come in and, and we're supposed to get 600,000, we get 300,000 because somebody filed for 10 years of tax reimbursement.
Luckily, those, those have been, you know, just real small numbers when the adjustment comes in.
Right.
So, okay.
That does, that's.
Thank you.
Hey, counsel, any other questions? Mr. Chris?
Yeah, I did see the multi-use jumped up by just a little bit more than, than before. I know that we have our insurances and stuff that we have to pay for, but it, was that the fixtures that we had to change out, or was it some of the expense that we have out there, is that, you know, getting it ready for, for the natural gas line?
From the beginning, yes, sir.
Okay.
Beginning of the year.
Okay, very good. That's all. It's not even that big of a number.
Right.
But when, when we have our lease agreements, you know, that, that thing should ride the same, but it's slightly different. So just curious about that. Thank you.
Mr. Molina?
How long you been doing this?
With the same year. Just over a year.
No, but like, how long you been working for the city?
Almost two.
Okay. Are we going bankrupt anytime soon?
Not, no, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Serious question. No, I was serious, but no, sir.
Mrs. Bowen?
Thank you, like I said, for everything, you and your staff. Vanessa?
Always stepping up. Thank you guys so much.
We appreciate your hard work.
Awesome.
And I do have questions, sorry. Okay. And on the general fund revenue and expenses, it says inspections have expense, inspections have expense 14.44. This is due to professional services. Do you know what that was for?
Temp services for, for codes and.
Oh, okay, like for when we mow or.
Yes, ma'am.
I see. Okay, and then, I also wanted just to, I saw in solid waste that they, they spent less, so I just wanted to commend them on that, because that helped with that.
You forgot to turn in the rental on that, really.
That helped a lot.
That helps, a great help, yes, ma'am.
And then on the utility fund, I wanted to ask you, I saw that we have payments towards meters in the amount of 290,001. Do you know how much longer we have on that for, as far as payments, or when will we have that completed and paid out?
I don't remember, I've spanned that one off the top.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be, yeah.
Everything.
I'll get that for you. I apologize, I don't remember that one off the top.
Okay, and then, let me see, what was I gonna? On this one right here, on the golf course, it said, intergovernmental transfers has expense 12.29%. This is due to transfer to capital depreciation fund, not budgeted. Can you explain that, please?
That was my error.
Oh, okay.
I noticed I did show it going into the capital fund, but I did not put it on the golf course fund to go out. So that was my mistake.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Thank you. And then, explain that about the multi-use. I was going to ask on the, and I noticed on the hot funds, we showed that we had 105,000. What was that for?
Well, that's just for, that's budgeted, we haven't extended it yet.
It's not laughable, I just thought, I was, it was a question, title to ask. And then on the, let me see, I wanted to ask you on the check registry, we had, it's hard to tell with this on the phone, it's a 58,369.50. What's that?
Fifty-eight, say that one more time, I'm sorry.
58,369.50.
Metro Fire Department's.
Can you tell me what that was for?
Patrick?
What was the check number?
I don't see.
Is it by each? Let me see, hold on.
Oh, they're the bunker gear and Ram Corps, yes, I'm sorry.
The what?
Bunker gear.
Oh, bunker gear. Oh, okay.
So it's a PPE, it's also, that particular one is also a rescue.
Oh, was it that one that you? Oh, was it that one that you showed us?
Yes.
Oh.
And then is that the the light duty rescue gear?
Quick response, electric.
No, I'm talking about the the rescue gear that you were talking about. Is that the light the light duty rescue gear or is?
No, that one's not.
That one's a different one?
Different.
Okay.
There's a eighty-four, six ninety-one. Again, it's hard.
Power Technologies.
That's the encode. That's the software that we use.
Oh, okay. A hundred and fourteen thousand.
That's for meters. We we. Not for the meter project. It's just for other meters that were not part of the project that we're having to switch out that are old. Because if meter project didn't switch out every.
We have some though, right? Extras?
We've gone through, I mean.
They're gone that pallet that we have. Oh, okay.
And, yeah, Joe, Joe Sines keeps that inventory. We we I know he wanted to buy as many as he can because we do need them, and they're they're hard to get.
Need time.
He was able to get six to nine months.
I was going to say, especially now.
It is.
Running with some major problems. And the two ninety zero zero one?
The two ninety is that that's was the actual meter project.
Yeah.
Oh, that's the one that we just asked. I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that was it. There was another one that was like forty-nine, but.
Forty-nine?
Joe Goddard Enterprises.
Oh, that's the siren system that we spoke about that we'll get reimbursed for.
We needed that though.
Yeah.
We need that so bad. We have been waiting for years and years. I think that's it. There were a few others, but I think those ones already. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I'll get the term of the meter project too.
Okay, I appreciate it. And I did get I saw the callable date, so I don't need that at all since I got it on this.
Yes.
This report. Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number seven, executive session. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Chapter five-five-one, Subchapter D, the county city council will now recess into executive session, close meeting to discuss the following. The city council may enter into closed or executive session to discuss the following following pursuant to seven point one consultation with its attorney, Texas Government Code, and subsection five-five-one point zero seven one. Consultation with attorney regarding an update on litigation involving the multi-use facility. It is now seven oh six P M., and we will be entering executive session. Thank you.
Thank you all, everyone. We're back from executive session. So agenda item number eight, return to open session. Return to open session and take any action necessary as a result of discussion in proceeding agenda item number 7.1 pursuant to Texas government code chapter 551 subchapter D consultation with its attorney Texas government code and subsection 551.071. Sorry, I was out of breath.
Sorry, Mayor. It's long-winded. Apologize for that. I request that no action be taken on this item. It's not necessary at this time.
No action on agenda item number eight. Moving on to agenda item number nine, adjournment. I'll entertain a motion. Mayor making motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and meeting is adjourned 9:07 PM. Thank you so much.